Call the Twins Board of Education to order for Wednesday, September 4th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Soler?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
We are all here. If you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? All right. Moving on to my president's report. Again, good evening and welcome. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for September 4th, 2019. I'm Rob Felber and I'm honored to serve as your president of the Board of Education. Well, two weeks into the school year and Tigers are well underway to another fantastic year. At a recent board meeting, there was a question on operating procedures of the board. A school board is a very different entity than a municipality. Within our district, there are actually three different forms of government: a township, a village, and a city. Each organization operates and runs its public meetings differently. A school board and the open meetings roles are rooted in the Ohio Revised Code. At our annual organizational meeting each January, we adopt Robert's rules only for the way motions are actually handled. Unlike a city like Twinsburg, which operates on a charter overseen by the Ohio Revised Code, a school board chooses how an agenda is developed and executed. Across Ohio, 600-plus school boards, the board president along with the superintendent is responsible for developing the agenda. There are decades of precedent that were in place long before anyone on this board was elected. There's also ample time in our open meetings via remonstrance for public participation before the business part of our agenda, as well as many ways to reach...I know you're hanging on every word...each administrator and board member with questions or concerns, and we welcome your participation. On tonight's agenda is the adoption of our yearly goals of the district. Each year, the district uses goals to guide countless programs and initiatives. At a spring retreat, the administrative team develops the draft goals. These goals reflect trends in education...I was hearing whispering, I thought I missed something. These goals reflect trends in education, realistic challenges facing our district, both financially and structurally, and how we are striving to continue to engage the entire community. The draft goals are then presented to the board in an open meeting, which is tonight, after a work session whereby the board can review and edit the language and ask questions of our administrators. Tonight's proposed goals on the agenda are a result of this process. Throughout the year, there will be presentations on continuous improvement and administrative reports on how these goals are progressing. And finally, tonight, we also have the privilege of welcoming and meeting our newest staff members. Congratulations to each and every one of you, and welcome to the Tiger family. Now, I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. It is hard to believe that we are into week three. Time sure goes fast when you're having such a great time with our students, and it's so awesome to see the students back, working so hard, supported by such an outstanding staff, and of course, a wonderful and caring community. We also once again like to welcome all of our new families. We have a number of new families that have joined our Tiger community this school year, and we wish them all the very best. Board of Education, as Mr. Felber just indicated, Mr. Sullen, our supervisor of personnel, will be joining you shortly to introduce new members of the staff, but just a few announcements before then. All you have to do is look around and you see that the district is now alive with activity from morning till night. We have so many students participating in so many different things. Open houses are underway, Blitter Net conferences will soon be here, athletics, activities, concerts, and all the things that make up such a great and well-rounded school district. So, we invite all of our residents to take a look at the district website where the most current calendar of events can be found. Our students really love when you can come out and support them by your presence, so we invite you to do that. And if you're interested in purchasing an athletic pass for the 2019-20 school year, please visit the district website under Athletics for all of that information. Board of Education, I know all of us have been glued to whatever media channels we listen and watch, and this has been a very scary week for our friends who live along the east coast of our country, as well as the Caribbean. And so, as has been our practice in the past, our district administrators, staff members, and students are going to be invited next Friday, September 13th, to participate on a special fundraising day called Tigers: Hats On For Hurricane Relief. And what we're asking all of our staff and our students to please consider donating a dollar, get to wear a crazy hat to school for the day, which we don't usually permit, and all of that money will then be sent to the American Cross for their relief efforts, and they do such great work. So, we wish everyone who is being impacted by Hurricane Dorian all the very best. We hope and pray for their safety, and just know that our Tiger family is here to support you, and we hope that this fundraiser gleams lots of donations that we can then send forward to the American Red Cross. Parents will be sending information about that to you through Blackboard Connect at the end of this week. Secondly, on this Friday, September 6th, we will be hosting our second annual Tiger Wellness Tailgate Party over on Tiger Trail, which is the access road that borders Tiger Stadium. And it's just a great event. It's two hours in length from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and it's hosted by the District Wellness Committee. Lots of fun family fitness activities, lots of great opportunity to meet and mingle with members of our Tiger family, and all of our support organizations have been invited to participate as well and to set up a booth and just talk to you a little bit about what they do for our students and how you can become involved in their activities. So, again, that's Friday, September 6th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM over on Tiger Trail. It's supposed to be a beautiful night. And then, following that, at 7:00 PM, stick around for the varsity football game against our neighbors to the north, the Solent Comets. It should be a really great night, great athletic activity, great band, and just a lot of fun and fitness, thanks to our District Wellness Committee, who always do such a great job here for our students, our families, and our staff members, too. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Sullen, our supervisor of personnel, to come forward. He has been a very busy administrator since, I want to say, probably February of March of last school year, as he recruited and then shifted through hundreds of applications to find the very best talent to help support our students here in our school district. So, this evening, Board of Education, Mr. Sullen would like to introduce to you personally members of our staff who are new, and I know that you would like to come down and congratulate all of our new staff members as they are introduced. And as he does so, he will also ask building administration to come forward for each of the buildings so that they can welcome again in a nice, special way the members of their staff that are joining us this school year. So, welcome, Mr. Sullen.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. First, I wanted to thank the Board of Education for their hard work and support through this process, as we did have the opportunity to expand many programs throughout the high school, as well as throughout the district. So, I wanted to thank the Board for their continued support academically for our students here in Twinsburg. So, first up, we are going to ask our Bissell principal, Ms. Steve Johnson, if she will come forward. Of course, you go first, right?
Yeah.
All right. First educator I would like to introduce is Ms. Rachel Miller. Rachel will be the physical education teacher at Bissell Elementary School. Rachel previously taught for four years at a charter school in Cleveland called the Intergenerational School, and her fun fact is that when she was in the second grade, she was learning how to jump the high bar in gymnastics. She caught it but let it go and broke both arms at the same time. Three months later, she was back at it. Next up, we have Ms. Jo Sable. She is unable to be with us this evening as she had an event with her daughter, but you may know the name, Jo Sable. She will be the intervention specialist at Bissell, but she previously was an instructional assistant at Bissell, so she went from being an instructional assistant and took over the position for the intervention specialist. And her fun fact was that she is a great tap dancer. And these are two new employees at...oh, sorry, what did I miss?
Reading specialist.
Media.
Media. It's been a very long day.
(laughing)
And a very, very...there's lots of names in my head, so I apologize.
Kristy Shula.
Thank you. I apologize. Kristy was actually hired after our original kickoff at the high school, so I apologize. Kristy, do you have a fun fact about yourself?
Fun facts. I worked at SeaWorld, so that is my student's favorite fun fact.
All right. I believe you're the second person this summer. We've learned that worked at SeaWorld, so, small world. All right, and this is Bissell. Yeah, I'm doing her with Wilcox. Sorry, we have a couple of staff members that are split between two buildings, so we're gonna pick one and go with it. All right, thank you. Next up, we're gonna ask Wilcox to come forward. First up, we're gonna call Ms. Jennifer Ball. Jennifer Ball, she will be the art teacher split between Wilcox and Bissell. Fun fact about Jennifer is that she was actually the owner of Wow Lily Studio here in Twinsburg, so she actually has a lot of connections with our students already, so congratulations, Jennifer. Next, we're gonna call Kristen Ligwazinski. Kristen will be an intervention specialist at Wilcox. She has over 17 years' experience as a preschool teacher, a preschool intervention specialist throughout Geoga County and with the Geoga County ESC. Her favorite color is pink, and she loves to bake. Next, we have Jessica Mendez, kindergarten teacher, Wilcox. Jessica's experience included multiple long-term substitute positions throughout the Willoughby-Eastlake School Districts for over two and a half years, and her fun fact is that she has eight siblings. Next up, we're gonna call Amanda Welton. So, Amanda will actually be split between Wilcox and Dodge. She is a reading specialist at Dodge, but as far as Wilcox, she will also be a reading specialist, as well as teach art, music, and PE to kindergartners. All right, and that sums it up for Wilcox. Thank you. Next, we're gonna call Dodge. Mr. Holland. Board of Education, as I previously mentioned, Ms. Welton will be splitting between Wilcox and Dodge, so we won't call her back up here again. So, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Jamie Markulus, 6th grade Language Arts and Social Studies teacher. She's new to the field of education and received her Bachelor's of Science in Education from Kent State University, Middle Childhood Language Arts and Social Studies, and her fun fact is that she saw two former presidents in 2016. Thank you, Jamie. Next, we have Lindsay Platek. Lindsay will be teaching 6th grade Language Arts and Social Studies. She has five years' teaching experience in Twinsburg City School District, as well as she has subbed and completed four additional long-term subpositions within the school district over the past 10 years. Her fun fact is that she has a total of six siblings. Next, I would like to introduce you to Claire Jarmusik. Claire is unable to be with us this evening. She had a prearranged event. Her work experience includes three years at Strongsville High School as an assistant director for marching band, and one year teaching high school English at North Ridgeville. Her fun fact is that she enjoys reading and working with her mischievous horse, Gage, in her spare time. Ms. Jarmusik. Next up, I would like to call Ms. Haley Carper. Ms. Carper is the most recent hire here in the district, but we all know Ms. Carper because she has been a long-term sub for our speech-language pathologist. So, we know her, we love her, and we're excited to have her on board full-time now. All right, and this completes Dodge? All right. See, now I'm scared to say this completes something now, so...all right. All right, next up, we're gonna call Mr. Reese and the rest of the administrative team. Well, first, we'd like to introduce Michelle Loudin, our admin intern. She's been with us many years, and we are excited to have her in this role, as we look to support her and she looks to support the district, so we're really excited about that. Next, I would like to introduce to you to Michelle Anderson, 8th grade Science. Ms. Anderson has a Bachelor's Degree in Biology from the University of Toledo. Her work experience includes Newberry High School science teacher for four years, as well as West Town Academy science teacher in Chicago. And her fun fact was that she spent a year abroad teaching English as a second language in South Korea and Russia. Next, I would like to introduce to you to Ms. Elizabeth Brower. Mrs. Brower will be the art teacher. She earned a Bachelor's Degree in the arts from Wells College and completed her teaching licensure program at Notre Dame College. Her work experience includes multiple long-term substitute experiences in Hudson City School District, and her fun fact is that she makes a rock sculpture on Kelly's Island every year at the quarry. Next, I would like to introduce to Mr. Ryan Frank. Mr. Frank will be teaching physical education at RBC. He has taught in CMSD for the past three years before coming to Twinsburg, and his fun fact is that he has started his own basketball skills development business. And this completes RBC. Next, I would like to call up the high school. Did you want your assistants to come up there with? All right, first, he's unable to be with us this evening, but I wanted to introduce you to Malik Billingsley. He's our hall monitor at the high school, and he received a degree from Muskingham University. He has multiple years as a childcare worker and basketball coach, and his fun fact is that he played professional basketball. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Kyle Fazio, school psychologist. Mr. Fazio received his Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology from Cleveland State University and a Master's of Educational Specialist as a school psychologist from John Carroll University. His work experience included pep, as well as Richmond Heights local schools, and his fun fact is that he loves to cook and bake. Board of Education, I would like to take this time to introduce you to the happiest man I know, and his name is Mr. Joshua Harris. Joshua...Mr. Harris will be teaching freshman success, and in board, I must warn you, his name is Joshua. Do not call him Josh. And Joshua loves school. From the University of Akron, he received his Master's in Curriculum and Instruction with a specialization in Integrated Language Arts, his Bachelor's of Arts in English with a minor in Spanish and Creative Writing. He was currently working at the city of Solent as a summer camp director, and his fun fact is that he worked for Disney for eight months, and that he loves all things Disney and superhero.
(applause)
You can't work at Disney and not be happy. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Ashley Plissard, high school art teacher. Ashley comes to us from multiple long-term substitute experiences in Wattsworth City School and Worcester Montessori School, and her fun fact is that she can juggle. Next up, I would like to introduce you to our newest security liaison, Mr. Phil Schmuck, who couldn't be with us this evening. He has a family matter that he needed to attend to. Mr. Phil Schmuck actually comes to us out of the world of education. He actually was a social studies teacher for many years with multiple teaching roles in Richmond Heights School, Amherst Exempted Schools, and Maple Heights School. You know him as our basketball coach, but his fun fact is that he really, really, really enjoys music. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Katie Schobert, instructional assistant, Twinsburg High School. Katie actually worked...already previously worked for Twinsburg City School District, multiple years at Wilcox Primary as a lunch and playground aide, and her fun fact is that she would love to go tornado chasing one day. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Gina Sendalar, instructional assistant, Twinsburg High School. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Middle Childhood Education. Her work experience includes three years as a 4th through 6th grade ELA teacher at Collinwood Village Academy, and her fun fact is that they are having a son in the middle of September, as well as just built a house. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Dave Jodos, school counselor, Twinsburg High School. His work experience includes high school counselor at Biomed Science Academy, as well as the fact that he is an experienced automotive and machinery technician. And his fun fact is that in 2013, he drove to Alaska and spent the summer working at a camp and exploring as much as he could. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Michelle Little. Michelle is the intervention specialist at the high school. Her work experience include Integrations Treatment Center, and her fun fact is that she has been a member of the American Zagreb Junior Tabareseans, and she has been, since the age of five, traveling America, Canada, and Croatia, singing and dancing. All right, we're gonna ask Mr. Walker if he could come up. The first person I wanted to introduce you to tonight is Mr. Gene Timbers, janitor at THS. Mr. Timbers sent me an email explaining that he would not leave work because he wanted to make sure his area was clean. But his work experience included 30 years tool and die, nine years cleaning, 19 years painting. He loves all kinds of music and is a bit of a jokester. He loves canoeing and hiking, and he says life is too short not to have fun. So, that's Mr. Gene Timbers. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Ryan Prezendorfer, maintenance for the Twinsburg City School District. Ryan has actually been in construction and home renovation since he was a teenager. He was at Mass Check Construction for seven years and 11 years at Troy Construction, and his fun fact was that he married his best friend on the beach. From transportation, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Jennifer Curry-Hort, driver of transportation. She has 22 years of experience as a driver for Happy Days School through Portage County Board of DD, and her fun fact is that she loves to craft. Next up, I would like to call Mrs. Linda Fisher. Linda Fisher will be here, representing herself and her husband this evening. Linda has multiple years of experience working in transportation. Her and her husband actually owned a commercial transportation business, and her fun fact is that she is the chauffeur when her and her husband are in the car together. And then, her husband, Mr. John Fisher, who I realize is probably one of the most interesting men in the world. His work experience is the fact that he worked for NASA on the Boeing aircraft for Apollo 11, as well as he spent time as a commercial pilot, and he owned his own transportation company, as well as his fun fact is that he was a commercial pilot-flight instructor. So, I don't think there's anything that he can't do. All right, and that completes transportation and maintenance. So, Board of Education, Superintendent Powers, and to everyone here, just want to thank you. I know it's a lot of hard work that goes into finding the best candidates, and it's support all around, from the principals, from fellow teachers sitting in on interviews for other fellow teachers, so it is a true, truly, 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 a team effort. So, I thank everyone, and I'm excited to have our newest members of our Tiger family. Thank you.
Before everybody dismisses, what I would like to request is that we...all the new staff would please go up to the lobby so that we can take one picture of everyone. And Mr. Felber, of course, would like to say a few words before that.
This is not quite like convocation. We were doing probably the world's rock, paper, scissors. I'd never done that. I thought we were gonna do that tonight? Not doing it? No, again, welcome. I've had Twins went entirely through the district, now in their second year of college, and this is a great place to live. It's a great place to work. Move here if you can, and we're just all very happy to have you on behalf of myself, colleagues. We all know, really, when we go on the tours, we really see the work that goes on. We see reports of continuous improvement. We know the work's getting done. We know it's hard work, and it's much appreciated on behalf of all the students and parents as well.
Mr. Aho, I'd like to make a motion to recess. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Davis. Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
And say reconvene, we're all here. And say, reconvene, we're all here, and we are at committee reports. Do colleagues have reports?
Yeah, I do update for Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. So, as you know, the Career Center started back on the nineteenth, same as other districts, and we actually welcomed a few new staff members during a staff insertion date that they had on that day. So, three staff members, Joe McNamie, he's an Electrical Systems Instructor, Dignity Rubensol, she's Administrative Assistant to Adult Education, and Maria Gamare, and she's an Administrative Assistant to Job Placement. Also, we ushered in a new program for the high school, and the high school is now offering Transportation Services Program instructed by Chuck Russo. The program is filled with eager, ready-to-learn students, and the programs provide basic maintenance, repair, escort services for all means of transportation. So, we're pretty excited about that. So, we actually met last Thursday, on the twenty-eighth, and we voted to approve yet another year of partnership dollars to all of our membered districts, including Twinsburg. So, just a little history behind this, prior to when I started on the board, they actually were instituting this for a number of years, and they had to stop doing it due to some financial constraints that they ran into, so they weren't able to do it. And so, when I started on the board, probably maybe a year after I started, we actually voted to reinstitute awarding, the awarding of the thirty thousand dollars to the districts, and they are to be earmarked for purposes of STEM. So, it's not an automatic thing. I mean, the districts have to submit a plan for approval before the dollars are dispersed. So, cumulatively, this will be the fourth consecutive year that we've been doing this, and that's what, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? So, I'm proud to be part of the awarding of those dollars, and I hope to continue doing that so that we can continue offering opportunities for our students here in Twinsburg. And that concludes my report for Cuyahoga Valley Career Center.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, and thank CBCC once again for that great addition to our general fund. Other colleagues for other committees?
Finance Committee is meeting this Friday, seven-thirty at the board offices.
Did you have anything from BAC or no?
No.
No, okay. Yep, Finance is early, right? Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty, yes.
Seven-thirty, Friday. Okay. Any other committees? All right, I'm seeing no blue cards, so no remonstrance. And I'm going to move on to I, and without objection, read the three items there in Treasuries Report and Recommendations. I, one, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of August seventh, two thousand and nineteen, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of June, two thousand and nineteen, Bank Reconciliation, General Fund Financial Summary Report, and Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. And three, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of June, the total including payroll, four million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, and three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solara. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those three items pass five-zero. Moving on to Action Items Personnel. J-one, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts these certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit J-one, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts these supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? I don't think we had any.
One hesitation.
Any retirements? No. Not that time of year. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those three items pass five-zero. Moving on to Action Items New Business, without objection, I will read K-one through eight together. K-one, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the donation from Jostens of Grand River, Ohio to the Twinsburg High School in the amount of five hundred and ninety dollars and zero cents for the sale of various graduation items purchased by students per the attached exhibit. Two, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement for one student to attend Champion School for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year at the cost of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and zero cents. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves a release of transportation for two students for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year from the Aurora City School District to the Twinsburg City School District, as sent to the board under separate cover. Four, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the following administrators listed below as credential evaluators for the purpose of the Ohio Principal Evaluation System and/or the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. Five, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves Board of Education Policy five-one-one-three, inter-district open enrollment without revision for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, and that is exhibit K-five. Six, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves a contract with Lakefront Lines of Cleveland for the charter press services for the spring twenty-twenty eighth-grade Washington trip, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Seven, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the job description for the Director of Wellness per the attached exhibit. Eight, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty district goals per the attached exhibit K-eight. Is there a motion for those eight items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solara. Of course, thank you to Jostens, and, let's see, anything that really getting ahead of that Washington trip, Mr. Welker? Anything in particular you want to draw attention to, Mrs. Powers?
If I could introduce the four district goals for the year, Mrs. Farthing is projecting them up here on the screen. Board of Education, as Mr. Felber recognized earlier in his report, the goals that we're presenting this evening to you come to you after much consideration by members of our staff who begin working in the spring into the summer months, and then last evening in the work session, the Board of Education had a chance to hear presentations by the central office administrative team regarding the work that will take place. These are the goals, they are not the action steps. The action steps are actually the work behind the scenes, or things that will happen to support the goals and to make sure that at the end of the school year that we have met the goals as defined this evening. So, first of all, first and foremost, and of great importance, will be our Student Growth Goal, and basically, it says during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, the Twinsburg City School District will provide targeted, consistent academic and social, emotional opportunities that challenge, prepare, and empower the whole child with skills and resiliency to pursue a post-high school path. Success of this goal will be measured by a comparative analysis of academic and behavioral data. The Board of Education, as I mentioned last night, as you know, the Ohio Board of Education and the Ohio Department of Education has now authorized Social Emotional Learning Standards, so we thought it was important. We're talking about educating the whole child, not just the academic side of what we do, but making sure that we have plenty of supports in place for students to make sure that they can grow very healthy as far as their social, emotional path in life as well. And so, that goal is very inclusive of both academic and social, emotional well-being. Second is the goal regarding our district's finances, and it states during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, the Twinsburg City School District will continue to support educational opportunities while operating in a fiscally responsible manner. This will be achieved by utilizing the benchmarks identified in the Financial Strategic Planning Flow Chart. And as you know, for many years, Board of Education, we have been working with Mr. Aho and the Board of Education to define the various benchmarks on the Financial Strategic Planning Flow Chart. It has been very beneficial in our presentations to the community, and so those benchmarks will help us to ensure that when we are proposing opportunities to support our students, that we are also being very cognizant of the district's financial situation, not only today, but moving into the future. So, that goal is very important to make sure that we are great stewards of our community's fiscal dollars. Thirdly, our Community Relations Goal, it states during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, the Twinsburg City School District will engage members of the community through the implementation of the Comprehensive District Communication Plan. Success of this goal will be measured through feedback of the various sources of communication. Last year, Board of Education, as you know, you set us on a course to actually develop the Comprehensive District Communication Plan. We had an action team led by Mr. Solan that engaged members of the community, and that work will ultimately provide for you the strategic plan, but this district's communication plan has been in the works in its development for a couple of years, two or three at the most, and now we're happy that the plan is ready to roll out this year, and so this will be the year of implementation for that communication plan. As I mentioned last night, our district website is undergoing a redesign as we speak, and so we hope to be able to launch the redesigned website in a soft manner right before winter break, and we will be asking members of the community for some input regarding some of the parts of the website so that we're certain that when the new website is rolled out, it is meeting the needs of our community members. So, that's just one example of some of the work that will take place under the new Communications Plan. And then finally, our Facilities and Grounds Goal states during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, the Twinsburg City School District will continue to engage the community in efforts to address the immediate and long-term needs regarding facilities and grounds. This will be achieved by continuing to implement and update the facilities assessment while remaining within the district's financial resources. As you know, Board of Education, Mr. Welker here has, this work is his primary responsibility. In two thousand and sixteen, the district developed a facilities assessment that talks about the various needs of our grounds and facilities. It was updated last year through the work of the action team regarding facilities and grounds, and this year, as you know, we will be talking with our residents regarding the conceptual legacy project, and we look forward to launching that effort in a bigger way as we are now underway for the school year. So, those goals will guide the district in the nineteen, twenty school year. We appreciate your consideration of them this evening, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
I think having, just having had the work session, we asked a lot of our questions last night. Does anybody have anything further? We know it's a lot of hard work, as I said in my report, that goes in that administrative team does, and especially impressed with the Student Growth Goal, and, you know, we talked about it last night, you know, we always talked about, you know, the whole child, and, you know, their knowledge is catching up at the state. We've been doing some of this stuff, you know, for years, so it's nice to be cutting edge, it's nice to have some good stretch goals, they are smart goals, are measurable, and we've seen plenty of binders that we know that measure these goals, so, thank you. Anything further?
I would just, I would echo that, that, you know, this is a cumulative effect of a lot of work that's been happening over a lot of years, and I would even add that it's a pretty progressive approach to making sure that the district is well on their way, on the path to delivering a twenty-first century education, instructional strategies, technology, you know, you name it, professional development, support and resources, all of which center around students. So, these particular goals, I think, are, we're on the cusp of really embarking on some, you know, pretty bold objectives and meeting some goals and benchmarks and doing some things that will have a lasting impact for years to come, well, you know, well into the future in terms of, you know, well, all of us will be gone, but I think that what we're about to do will have a lasting legacy for years to come, so I'm pretty proud of what we've come up with here, and the work that goes into each and every one of those goals.
Any further comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those eight items pass five-zero. Moving on to nine, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves and authorizes the Ohio Schools Council the October two thousand and nineteen Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program to advertise and receive bids on behalf of said board, as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of four seventy-two passenger unit ties conventional school bus chassis and bodies. Is there a motion for that item as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Welker, any comment, or is that time of year?
So, this is part of the bid process, the Ohio Schools Council has been great about introducing an October bus bid, as well as they've always had one in the spring. The advantage of that is that there's two types of buses that we will receive bids on. One is a stock unit bus, the second is a custom-built. Last year, the custom-built buses were more financially and operationally advantageous to the district, so we went that route. But with the custom-built, it takes about six months for the bus to be built, so it allows us to have the buses in time for the summer, keeps us on our ten-year replacement cycle, so this year, we're due for between three and four buses, looking at the ten-year replacement cycle, so we'll see how the prices come in and then make a decision.
And as was noted in a previous meeting, a hundred percent of the buses pass state inspection, which is always great to know that the safety and such of the students and the drivers is maintained. Any further discussion on this? Roll call.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And item nine passes five-zero. We're now at Mclaney's. Hopefully, we'll see everybody at Tiger tailgate party on Friday, five p.m. to seven p.m. It was, last year was the first one we did outside, right? That was very, very well attended and a lot of fun. Let me see if my colleagues want to hit the obstacle course on the, you know, as long as trainer mics are on. Anybody else have anything further from Mclaney's?
I had an opportunity to attend the first official football game. It was away, Copley. I was there for my son plays, but nonetheless, I wanted to watch our Tigers win, and it was a spellbound, hard-stopping, overtime win in our favor. There's some drama at the end, but we pulled it out, so I'm pretty excited about our football team and looking forward to going head-to-head with our cross-town rivals, Solons, this coming Friday.
Anything further?
I know, just to welcome all the new staff again, and looking forward to a great year with new and old, seasoned staff members.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further, we're going to move on to Executive Session. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into Executive Session at seven fifty-three to discuss employment discipline and compensation of public employees per the Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-A, and to consider the purchase of property for public purposes per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-C, and to review negotiations with public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of employment per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-E. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solara, roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And the board is now in Executive Session, and we do not anticipate further business when we reconvene. Have a wonderful evening. I know.